What's that, the unofficial?
Okay, why don't we get started? I'd like to welcome you all to the school committee meeting of March 21st. You have before you an agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anything from the public saying nothing? We'll move on to the superintendent's report. As you may have noticed, Beth is not here. And so I will read her comments. March enrollment. For the month of March, our enrollment has dropped by three students. N E S lost two students, as did N I S, but C P S gained one student. Technology updates. A final report message was sent out to staff, parents, and school committee earlier today. It is our intention to continue updating when necessary, but specific tech systems and programs related to the school operations will be communicated internally with staff and administration. As of now, the following areas have been addressed for recovery. As of this past week, all schools have restored printing capabilities using Chromebooks or external USB cables. There are still some kinks to be worked out, but overall, there is general access. We're able to restore Munis use for our executive assistant of finance as their role with payroll is essential to the district. Facilities and sped are still going to town offices to access Munis, and we hope that other E S Ps will once again have access by the end of next week. But much of that depends on the town. Our food services, point-of-sale kiosks are finally up and running in each school. Filemaker has been restored, but tweaks need to be made to have access to all administrative staff data. Windows password changes have been implemented. Dual-factor identification or a temporary code will be shared with the person logging onto Windows will be implemented shortly for extra security. We're still waiting for the ability to restore our server that allows manual controls of our HVAC system at N E S and N I S. Additional updates. Spring sports begin today. We're excited to cheer our student athletes in lacrosse, golf, sailing, baseball, softball, and tennis as they start their season. Unfortunately, due to contracted delays, our new baseball field and tennis courts will not be ready for play this spring. But we know the baseball and tennis teams will do great anyway. We're in the midst of three administrative search processes. Curriculum director for humanities, E L director, and N I S principal. The interview committees for each of these positions have been hard at work reviewing candidate profiles and interviewing first-round applicants. We're now moving towards second-round interviews. We have planned forums for the school committees and others to meet the candidates. More information on dates and times of these forums will be shared with you soon. Congratulations to Natalie Mack and her fellow thespians who performed in this year's musical Guys and Dolls. It was a real treat to see such talent on stage, and I know they had a successful run with four performances last weekend. Kudos to Erin MacGyver and her team as well for a great show. Okay. Moving on, presentations and discussions of issues of interest to the committee. Multi-tiered system of support in grades K-5, Kim Laubertson, N E S assistant principal, Donna Johnson, N I S assistant, and N I S assistant principal.
I think in the absence of our tech genius, we hope you can just follow along.
Absolutely.
Awesome. Okay. We are here to talk about M T S S, multi-tiered system of support, at the two elementary schools. What this really is, to sum it up, is using data to match high-quality instruction and intervention in order to meet the needs of students. So on the second slide, you'll see a triangle. And at the bottom of the triangle is really what we call Tier One instruction. And this is the instruction that all kids get, but that doesn't mean one size fits all. I think Beth has talked before about universal design for learning and providing differentiation within the classroom, and that that's included within Tier One. Tier Two is more targeted, and we may be really targeting students with risk factors or students whose data has indicated that they're not responding, as we'd hoped, to Tier One. And then Tier Three is really intensive support. So most of our students are in Tier One, some of them are in Tier Two. And then we hope that Tier One and Tier Two keep students away from Tier Three, but we know that there are students who still require that support. So the next slide really just goes into detail in terms of Tier One, and I'll just put it to you really simply. So we think of Tier One like the thermostat on the wall. So if I set the thermostat to seventy, there are some kids who may need a sweatshirt, some kids who are sitting there in a t-shirt, but they're all okay. So when we, and we, that goes along with what we're doing in the general ed classroom. Teachers may still be meeting with small groups and giving targeted support, but students who are responding at a Tier One level are meeting our expected learning targets and When they're not, we move to Tier Two. So this is in addition to. So they're still going to sit in the seventy-degree room, but we may give them a big blanket. So this may look more like really targeted interventions in the classroom. It could look like pulling them out of the classroom, but we're really zeroing in. So in our school and possibly in your school, we're looking at what the root of the problem is. So if they're struggling with writing, but we really dig down and see that encoding or being able to spell is the issue, that's where we're going to target our support for those students. So if they're in the seventy-degree room with the blanket, but they're still cold, then we get them that big fuzzy Canada Goose jacket. So this is even more focused in intensive instruction and intervention. Again, it's in addition to, not in place of. And it is aligned to our core academic and behavioral curriculum and instruction, but we're zeroing in even more to provide targeted support. So it could look like more work with an interventionist outside of the classroom. It could look like modifications within the classroom, meeting with the teacher. The teacher and intervention is really responding to progress monitoring data to make sure that what we're doing isn't in vain, and it's really supporting them in moving forward. Tag?
You're doing great. You're doing great.
Oh.
Do you want me to do the focus?
Sure.
So really, what happens is the teachers really work with their teams, and they look at the students in their classrooms for those Tier One, Tier Two supports. And then we sort of look at, what are the areas we're going to look at for them? Academic, behavioral, and social-emotional. So during that time, they talk to their team, then they sort of like tease out what could happen, and then where they go from there. So when they're looking at academics, is there something in the classroom that's inhibiting them from making progress? Is there something in their behavior that maybe they're trying to communicate to us that's stopping them from accessing the curriculum in the way that we know they can? Is there something going on in their life, social-emotional lives, that we need to address? So first, teachers would work with their, their teams, and then they might come to us as a team and work forward on those three areas. Okay.
Oh, it's up to us. Sure.
So as I said, they work with their team, they sort of start the process. So they're not getting full answers, and they're not seeing kids really make the progress that they need to be making. And so they create a document, and they share that with Donna, is the contact in her building, and I'm in our building. And we use many, many parts of our team to come together. So then we talk at a bigger level of a team. We're looking at those things like, why are they showing sort of a deficit or a delay?
All right. I can keep going. The data that we both are using includes MAP data and W E A. It's given three times a year as a universal screener. We're also using D E S A, which is another screener, but looking more at the social-emotional needs for students. And then at our school, we also look at M C A S as a third data point. So like-
We look at like, were they in preschool? How did they do in kindergarten? What are the social connections that they've had available to them in their life? And what has their exposure been, along with the MAP and the D E S A?
So in really drilling down into what, what, where is the root? And what can we do to support students? We bring a whole team together. We've listed that all the different people who may be on the team. There's always an administrator, a regular education teacher. There may be a special education teacher. We always, especially for the social-emotional and behavioral concerns, we always have guidance counselors. If it's a student who's bilingual or a newcomer, we always have the English language teachers for behavioral. Sometimes we have our district B C B A come to offer suggestions. Our school psychologist is there, our interventionists, content specialists. If it's health-related, we may invite the nurse. And there are some times when we, we invite the parent to be there as well. And I think you already talked about the process, right?
Sorry?
No, that's okay. So our cycle is really, what is the problem? Why is it occurring? What are we going to do about it? And then coming back, giving the intervention some time to work to determine if it's working. The goal is that it's working, and we're able to close the gaps. There are times when we may go through a couple of rounds of M T S S with a student, and we really are, still have questions because nothing that we're trying is working. And at that point, we may refer for an evaluation through the special education department just to really dig in, to get more data, to see how the student learns and how we can support them. We included data this year from N E S and N I S in terms of referrals to M T S S, and we broke them out into behavioral concerns, social-emotional concerns, academic, and then some kiddos that have maybe a mix of the two. I can tell you, N I S, what we've seen more of in the past two years is the social-emotional and behavioral concerns coming through. So it's been wonderful to have a district B C B A attend those meetings and give us some new tools to use to really support our kids.
And then, of course, as Donna's sharing, some of those outcomes are, teachers are really looking deeper at a whole child, at all the areas of development and all the areas of academic progress. We look at those tiers of instruction. We're really, really teasing down that rate of progress. It's a huge team effort, and I like it because I do feel like sometimes as a teacher, you feel like a silo, but there's that, you can work with your team, then there's another layer. I think a really strong thing that's happened is we've aligned in our schools how our process is at N E S that moves up to N I S, and we share our documentation. Because in the past, people have often thought, if I take a child to child study, it means they're en route for a referral for special education. And that is not the case. We really want to see, what are the factors? So as Donna said, we do review of cases sometimes. Well, it's great because when we're in our meetings, we talk about as sort of like a think tank, what could be a process for six to eight weeks, and then we're coming back and reviewing. Because we don't want to go straight to a referral. We want to see what interventions really do work. We've definitely seen a lot of student success and growth, and where those places are identified.
Okay. Question?
No questions there.
Natalie?
I'm just wondering, how long, how long has this been used? Like, this concept?
At our, our schools?
Yeah.
Since I've been there.
I think there have been versions of child study. I think the state offered up some information several years ago, and I think now people are really looking at a whole student. And that's why we're looking at all those multi-tiers and how they really affect a student's education. So it's kind of new, but not. It's like reinventing the wheel again, in a, in a more, in a, in a better way for a team to look at kids.
Are you finding that there are fewer referrals this way? In terms of, you know, than making a referral to special ed?
I wasn't here when, if there's ever been a time where you could just make a referral to special ed, so I can't answer that.
I think we have a mix. I feel like certainly there's a deeper look, but I would defer to Deb Gately on that. I don't know that the numbers have changed significantly, but I do think that the data has been presented more thoroughly.
Deb?
Oh, yeah, I can jump in on that. So I wouldn't say that there's been an appreciable deference, but in the time that I've been here for the past two and a half years, what has come to be is, is far more fidelity to the process of child study and M T S S and understanding how we can intervene on children's behalf. Because once you engage in a special education, a value, a referral and evaluation, you're essentially taking forty-five days away from a child about what can we do. So the M T S S process gives direct intervention that gets monitored, and there have been instances where just behavioral supports or counseling supports that can be enacted for students prevents all of that other testing and evaluation to happen, and the child is in much better places as a result. But that, that's something that, like I said, M T S S is part of, it's a part of what's called a pre-referral process of analyzing, you know, what a student can and can't do, and how we best support them at where they're coming from.
Thank you.
When are the parents apprised of this going on?
So at our school, we don't even accept a referral to M T S S unless there's been two to three at minimum parent contacts addressing, like bringing, making them apprised of what the concern is and what we're doing about it.
And at our school, it's ongoing. If you've ever been in an elementary school, you certainly know that it's daily contact with parents. So teachers are often sharing some of their concerns through messages to them, or they might share, I'm going to go to the next level for the team. But once they kind of give me a packet, and I've said, you know, this is someone we're going to look forward to, they certainly call the parent. We don't have the parent come in initially, always, to that meeting, because we kind of would prefer to meet with them as like the comfortable teacher to parent, as a parent conference. So it might be an additional conference that the parent has with the teacher. And that teacher might invite myself or someone else from the team, more specific to the interventions that are happening. It's just a lot. There's, I think we have ten on our team, and it can be overwhelming for a parent to walk in and say, well, what, what do you mean? So it's good, like thorough data, and then sort of to share it with the parent, this is ongoing, what do you think? These are strategies you can give in the home that might help some of the reading intervention that's happening, or the math intervention, or these are some strategies that we think you could use to sort of like set structure and tackle some of those behaviors. But for us, it's, it's a little bit later, closer to if we have to do a referral, because we have a lot of parent conferences.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Friends of Nantucket Public Schools. Ann?
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Gina Henneke. So right now, I am the president of the Friends of Nantucket Public Schools. Just want to give you an update of where we're at. You know, we, our sole purpose is to fundraise, and we, fundraise and through raised events, events and grants that goes back to the schools and helps the teachers, the students, and, sorry, through meaningful initiatives. Our proceeds of our fundraise goes directly to the schools to help supply, like, we provide healthy snacks for the M C A S testing. We graciously funded Kevin Rosario on his conversation and lecture about vaping. This year alone, we have funded approximately ninety-three hundred dollars that go directly to teacher requests, such as like the annual memory project, the bus ride to Plymouth plantation, the ethnic lunch during the diversity club field trip. And we hope that once the computers are up, and again, from the cyber attack, that we could return to printing some materials at the schools. Our organization depends on volunteers, such as the parents, teachers, and the community. And we eagerly are wanting some more volunteers to join our board, since we have not fully recovered from COVID. And we're still looking for people with leadership skills that can see the opportunities of joining our board. And we have several positions available at the executive level, and we need more teachers and parents to want to be involved for their children. So, so that's where we're at. Any questions?
Thank you. How can we help you attract more board members and-
I would say help spread the word that we are here to help the public schools for the children, for the teachers, and our community. And we have a lot of cherished events, like our holiday house tour-
Yes.
-that everybody loves to volunteer, and that's one of our biggest fundraisers. We have a spring dance coming up in May, which the children at the elementary schools love because they love to win those baskets full of goodies. Then we have our swing into summer, which, this will be our second one, which it's more for the adults to come in and like let loose, dance, have fun. And that money raised there goes to the schools and the kids.
And what is that event? When was that?
Swing into summer.
Uh-huh.
So it's in June.
Okay.
So we do that. That's our summer fundraiser.
And where does that take place?
At the V F W. And we rent the facility. We have a band, the E Cliff and the Swing Dogs will be there. That's a future date, so. And it's, we seem to have a good response last year. Everybody had such a great time, you know, like, we're over COVID.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Marky?
Yes. I've seen some of your requests come through, the emails that come through the school. What other avenues are you using to let people know and the public that you need positions filled? Are you advertising and requiring a mirror? Do you have any social media presence? Do you have Instagram? Facebook?
We do, we do have a website. We have Instagram. We have Facebook. Where we go to the open houses at the schools. We take names, emails, we send emails to the district. They, when our meetings are held, what, the second Wednesday of every month, anybody's welcome to come. Community, but parents, teachers, you know, and grandparents, you know, the community, you know. And we just word of mouth. We try to get it out there through all, like, events that are at the school, too.
Well, I guess my point is that I didn't know your meetings were every, I didn't know when they were.
It's on the school calendar, too.
I understand that, but if you're not, you need to reach someone outside of the school calendar. You need to like widen your reach a little bit. You know what I mean? Because I think there's people willing to help, but they don't know how to and where to. You know what I mean?
More than just inside the school.
It's not working for you inside the schools, right? You've got to step outside the box. No pun intended.
Greatly taken advice, yes.
That's it, thank you.
Blasted everywhere.
Natalie?
Okay. Thank you. Well, thank you for all you do. We appreciate it.
Updates to the athletic department documents.
So, a couple months ago, Mr. Hunt and myself started looking at the coaches handbook and the student athlete handbook, as well as an E A P specific to the athletic department. The athletic department's always had a coaches handbook and a student athlete handbook, but my time here, I don't think we've ever really looked at it that carefully. And this was all kind of driven by this young man right here. So hats off to Matt, because he, he did a lot of work on this. So I'm really thankful for that work. But, so, we don't bore you with all the small details of changing a few words here, adding C P S, taking this out, adding that. We just created kind of a cheat sheet for you guys there, so you can look at that tonight in the next few days. And if you have any questions regarding our changes, you know where to find us. You can email us, call us, text us, whatever you'd like to do with that. So with that being said, the E A P, we've never really had, so Matt's going to touch on the E A P specific to the athletic department.
Thank you, Mr. Lombardi. Just before I move on to that, I want to touch on a big change that I really wanted to make to these documents, is to make it a little bit more user-friendly. So we have all of our stuff on our website. So a lot of the changes you won't necessarily see in a printout. We did change the layout and stuff like that, but our table of contents, instead of having to scroll through if you want to go find something about if you're sick for practice and what you want to, how you're going to talk to your coach about it, in the table of contents, you'll just be able to click on that on the computer, and it'll bring you right to that tab, instead of trying to fuss around with a mouse and try to find it. But in terms of our emergency action plan, we've always had one with the school. But in my time here as an, as the athletic trainer and now assistant athletic director, I've never really seen one for our athletic department. And I know that that is a, a huge thing coming from a medical standpoint, just to make sure everyone's on the same page, whether it's us in the administrative roles, our coaches, our student athletes, our parents, the police, the E M Ts, whoever it may be. And unfortunately, in light of the Damar Hamlin incident, that, I think, sparked a fire for a lot of people to really update these types of policies and changes and whatnot. So I've always had one that I've slowly started to upgrade and, or I guess, put in over the years. But like I said, going back to that, that kind of really sparked my fire to put it all together and now present it here. I know we don't have it on the computer, but we will have it on our website. I know that it's in that packet. It is pretty long. It's like twenty-four pages.
It's not eighty-six.
But it is pretty inclusive. It talks about everything from travel to venue locations, to lightning, heat, cold, A E Ds, and anything in between that you could think of in regards to our medical team and our athletics and where we participate. So I guess, instead of me rambling on, if anybody has any questions, I'd love to either.
No questions. I think it looks great, though. It's very comprehensive.
I have a question, I mean, not a question, but this statement. I think it's huge, 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 huge. Not much more sites would use it, that you can go through the table of contents and just click on what you're looking for instead of having, because you might only have five minutes, but you have one specific thing you're looking for, and that, that's huge. That's big. Thank you.
Especially in, like, like I said, this is a twenty-three-page document, and then the other ones are-
That's why it's even bigger.
Fifteen, yeah. So just to be able to easily find some things, I think, that was huge.
Good job.
Thank you.
Natalie? How many A E Ds you guys have?
Let's see. We have-
We're in the process of ordering a few more, but they're back orders, right? They're in stock. They're tough to get, right? I'm sure you know.
No, I know.
Yeah. So we're trying to get one, because there's not one in the fieldhouse. So I think we're trying to get one in the fieldhouse. There's another one-
Especially in like, like I said, this is a twenty-three-page document and then the other ones are-
That's why it's even bigger.
Fifteen, yeah. So just to be able to easily find things, I think that was-
Good job.
Thank you.
How many AEDs you guys have?
Let's see. We have-
We're in the process of ordering a few more, but they're back orders, right?
Yeah.
They're tough to get, right? I'm sure you know.
No, I know.
Yeah. So we're trying to get one because there's not one in the fieldhouse. So I think we're trying to go in the fieldhouse. There was another location that someone recommended.
Yeah, we really wanted to put them at all of our sites. So there should be one. Well, there isn't right now, but like Mr. Lombardi said, we're going to buy a few more. There, there'll be one probably on the field hockey baseball field in that shed, down on the stadium field in the fieldhouse. Now over in our Bacchus sheds and then at, at the new baseball field. But right now, I know we have four in the high school. One being the one that the athletic trainer keeps. So there's one in Tyler's office and then there's also one on his golf cart that he carries with him to wherever he's going. And then there's two in every other school, to my knowledge.
Yeah, but just I think it makes sense to have one right on the field. Like, yeah, we're practicing on Bacchus Lane. And we're, we need an AED and Tyler's not there. Yes, we could run to the front doors of NES or NIS, but it could be-
It's still wrong. Yeah, no, I was just thinking about it because I know we can have several events going on at the same time. And I think it's, even if something as innocuous as baseball, having a, a, something there in case maybe somebody go down.
Money well spent, for sure.
And it doesn't even have to be for our athletes. It could be for any spectator, any, I mean, wherever, a public campus after two-twenty, so.
And the other thing I noticed is you were going to do a tarp carry with somebody that was down with heat stroke. Might not have in those games or contests that we have a tub with ice in it.
Yeah, Tyler actually brought that up this past, in the middle of this football season, after the heat period of the season. So that's definitely something that we're going to look into, probably for next year. Maybe getting one or two of those big refillable tubs.
There was the guy that died up at Minnesota, big guy. It was, I think it was preseason.
Was this past summer?
No, it was a couple of years ago. Because it was a big, I was at a big presentation of it and they said, you know, having a tub of ice is a great way to start.
Yeah.
Well, they're starting to get pretty strict. Like we talked this summer about when to practice, when not to practice. So it's definitely tricky.
Do you have a wet ball thermometer?
No, we were using you. That's what we were doing.
Okay. Well, good. Thank you very much. I, I think this is a great job.
Thank you.
And it, it really does address everything. Dirty compressions and a couple breaths.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Committee discussions and votes to be taken. So we'll start with the vote to approve the NHS culinary travel to Foxborough, Mass. for culinary competition March twenty-first and twenty-second.
So moved.
So they're already there.
Yeah, I think they're there.
Can we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
A vote to approve the donation, the amount of one thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars and fifty-four cents from the Friends of Nantucket Public Schools, NIS for clay art supplies.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
A vote to approve the donation, the amount of five hundred dollars from Grain Magio to the NHS Culinary Arts Program gift account.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
A vote to approve the donation of the amount of a thousand dollars from the Nantucket Island Lumber to NHS Woodshop Department gift account.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
A vote to approve the fundraising check in the amount of one thousand six hundred and eighty-seven dollars, fifty-seven cents from Hayward Photography to the NHS Activity Account.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, January twenty-fourth meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The February second workshop meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
February twenty-first, public hearing meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
And then February twenty-second, workshop executive session, meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Vote to approve transfers and invoices.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any subcommittee groups?
We're still in negotiations. That's ongoing. I did attend the Cape Cod Collaborative Meeting, which was interesting because a lot of the schools involved are also involved in negotiations. So that was interesting to hear. And that is all from my subcommittees.
I'm on the NIS committee to find a new principal and we are still ongoing. We have a couple of good candidates.
Great.
Thank you. Okay, Natalie, what's going on?
Well, the big thing was the spring sports and the musical, as you talked about. The college scholarship page is now open for seniors on the guidance website. The middle school chorus and band have a concert tomorrow at seven in the auditorium. And NHS band and chorus have a concert next Wednesday in the auditorium. The ELAMCAS is next week for sophomores, sophomores, I think. And then we have a guest author, Kwame Alexander, who's coming this Thursday for the high school for an all-school assembly.
Nice.
Thank you. Okay, agenda for the next meeting, which will be April fourth. We're going to address enrollment, student support services, and the annual sped update and snack. Any questions?
No, sir.
No.
Any new business? Can we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. That was-
Doc left me thirty-six minutes.